Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, June 13th, 2011. And this evening, City Council is going to do several things. We are going to have a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant. Then we are going to go into two different committee meetings. One for transportation, one city service. But at 7:30 PM, we will go into a special session of City Council. And if that wasn't enough of us after the special session, there will be a Safety Services Committee meeting and a Planning and Development Committee meeting. Finishing off with the ever-so-popular Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. So with that, Mayor Lyle, tell us about the Community Development Block Grant public hearing.
Okay, this is the first of two public hearings that we put together for the -- this is the Formula Community Development Block Grant. This is a state-administered CDBG monies. Usually runs in the neighborhood of $90,000 to $100,000. A portion of it always goes towards housing, another portion to administration. In the past, so we're talking about anywhere between $70,000 to $80,000. There are actually some handouts here, but I would tell you right off the top of looking at it, the handouts are not that descriptive because they really cover both the CHIP program as well as the formula money. Again, the formula money we're talking about is maybe about $70,000. The first of the hearing is, of course, is to determine what needs are there. Having conversations with my Public Works Director, one of the things brought up was, of course, trying to do something lining the sewer, sanitary sewer lining on Cable Lane. Whether this falls into low and moderate income, census block is the next thing we need to check. Last year, if you remember what we did, well, actually, the past two years we're doing is Mill Street. This goes to part of the sanitary sewer that's going to be occurring on Mill Street, which should be starting up this week. Again, we rolled two of those years in because of the high cost. If we're talking about $70,000, $90,000, you know, it's not going to cover it all. If you remember, the previous money was spent, I believe, on Harold Avenue. Is that the previous one? And the previous one to that was the Mary and Granville Street rehabilitation on that. And then, I'm trying to remember the ones previous to that. We're going back pretty far here. In the past, we've used it for mostly infrastructure, capital improvements. We're here to take suggestions. If you go to this, the CDBG, or actually Department of Human Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, you have to look under the state-administered CDBG portion of it. This is for cities that are not entitled cities, which means we have less than 50,000 people, or metropolitan areas or counties with less than 200,000. So what we fall into is the state administration, which is why it's the formula money, and we get an allocate of it every year. So we're willing to take suggestions on it. Some of the things they talk about, of course, would be it's the acquisition of property for public purposes, construction, reconstruction of streets, water sewers, neighborhood centers, recreation facilities out of the public works. Demolition, rehabilitation of public and private buildings, public services and planning activities. Again, if, they kind of co-mingled with the CHIP grant, which we actually applied for, that we have yet to yet receive any word on whether we received that or got awarded that or not, the CHIP grant. That, I don't know when that's going to actually, we're going to hear about that. So the purpose of this one is to take, to field questions and see what's possible, not possible. And then, of course, the second public hearing will kind of narrow it down to what the next step will be or the next projects we're thinking of. Again, we're talking about $70,000 to $90,000. Last, but not least, I see more people have entered in, so there's a sign-up sheet somewhere in there for the public hearing, and please add your names to it if you get a chance.
Please sign this whether you're here to speak to the public hearing or not. We need a record of everyone that was at the meeting. So with that in mind, member sayings?
This city owns a house on Richland Avenue, adjacent to the fire station. And that was, that was removed from residential uses to be used as a storage area for some of our paper. And now there's this discussion about putting it back for residential
Yes.
With the thought of metropolitan housing availability. And I think I've heard a number that would be somewhere around $70,000.
Yes, we're talking about between $70,000 and $80,000 to get it back up to running condition.
Would that be?
That would be a good idea.
Fifty?
Yes.
Because that would give housing to a low and moderate family, we would hope.
Yes. And again, this would be, like, we have three other houses that we own, two in Blackburn, one in Central, and it's administered by the Metropolitan Housing Authority of Athens, and they do have needs. We, actually, Paula decided to put that online. We had that discussion two years ago. Comes down to the money to revamp it. There's no kitchen, no bathroom, everything needs to be upgraded. We don't really want to sell it because in case we ever do need to expand Station Two, we would have that footprint. That's a, that's a good one. I didn't even think about that. I think we had that discussion, but it's fallen off the cliff for me there. Okay. Other commentaries, I guess, is the question there?
Well, we should see if there is anyone from the public wishing to speak to this issue tonight. Public hearing is exactly that. We should hear from the public on any ideas that they may have.
This is the first of two public hearings.
Yes. Okay. The only thing I do remember being here when we did buy that house, and there was a expressed strong need for record storage, and I believe it's still being used for that, is, no.
We've emptied it out. Everything's in the armory now.
Okay.
It took us some months, many months, to get to that.
Hopefully, we were able to get rid of a bunch of things.
That's what took the time.
Okay. Good.
We're still not done yet. There's still a little bit of jetsam or flotsam that's floating around in the armory.
But the idea was possible fire station expansion. Would we really want to put money in that if we see that there is any chance of fire station expansion down the road?
Well, that's, that's a good question. Oh, I don't think it's going to happen immediately. If you're talking about fire station, we don't have the money. Remember that we've done studies that would point out to doing a fire station. If we're going to expand any footprint in terms of fire, we'd be talking about the east side, maybe. And then, as always, depending on expansion of University of States. If the study that was done, we did a study this year, right?
Recently.
Okay. The old Kramer 1999 study was, was one footprint we looked at, and I think Nancy brought up the idea of looking at what else we could do in terms of timing. We did a, I think we had Ilgard and GLS do a comparison of all response times. And to expand this Station Two would not really improve things that much. But at the same time, you never know. I mean, it's part of the dialogue with the, with the fire station two right now is, it would be, we could actually, for efficiency's sake, it would be worth remodeling it so they can pull around Hooper and then out the front again. Right now, the landscaping and the topography of the hills such that they can't do that. They have to back the thing in. It would be much easier if we're going to do, for efficiency, to actually make it so they could, you know, at the end of the fire line, they come around, go up Canterbury, down Hooper, and back in that way. But there's, there's a hillside there that has to be dealt with. So there are things that could be done with that, besides expanding the footprint. But I don't think there's anything in the future because we're going to buy a million-dollar ladder truck.
Yeah, and borrow to do it.
And borrowing to do it, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Please.
Just from the floor. Okay, I talked to the mayor about this briefly before the meeting, but I'd like to throw it out again. Is there any money in these block grants to repair or rehab dilapidated houses which are in private ownership? We have a couple on the west side that are in pretty bad shape.
That would actually fall, again, into the CHIP grant area. Now, this is, this is the formula money. But the flyer I gave you earlier tonight
Yes.
Essentially covers almost all the, all the CDBG monies, which, if you look at it, also includes economic development revolving loan funds. And there's, there's all sorts of different activities that are, fall into the Community Development Block Grant.
But it doesn't include CHIP?
This, no, well.
But what we submitted for under CHIP was some homeowner ownership, homeownership, owner-occupied
Owner-occupied, yeah.
Rehabilitation. But again, they have to meet the LMI standard.
Low and moderate income standards. That, we'll find out when we get the award for that. We had actually a series of public hearings for that as well. And I think the three, I think we went to four different areas. Down payment assistance, homeownership in terms of rehabilitation and repair, and then the other one was the rental
Rental assistance.
Assistance. With the, the concept there that we, there's some needs for the Metropolitan Housing Group to upgrade some of their housing stock. And by definition, they would fall under that category because they will be, again, the limitation of that is that you, if you're a renter, it's 50 percent match, and that you really have to accommodate low and moderate income housing. So this was done in the Hendrick administration. They tried that, and it did not work well because there weren't a lot of people who wanted to go from student housing to low and moderate income housing. And I think there were no takers at the time, as well as the fact that 50 percent match was not an incentive enough, I guess, at the time. We, that particular process goes through a housing evaluation, the CHIS, which is Community Housing Improvement Strategy. That, that's part of a group that includes the Athens Housing Coalition, Metropolitan Housing. They, the rules have changed where the CHIS is not really necessary, but it's, it's still included in the mix. So we haven't done an upgrade of that recently, I don't think, or an official upgrade. Probably the person who will contact, HAPCAT is the people who are the organization administrators that. Greg Andrews would be the person to talk to. We'll find out when we get the award what we can do with it. Well, I think the cutoff date for that was April, so I don't know how long it takes for the
Do you think the issue is at the state?
Yeah.
We're all waiting on the state budget.
Yeah.
And I have been instructed, if you wish to speak, if you could come up so that everybody can hear you. Yes.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak regarding the public hearing, now that you know you have to come to the podium? Thank you. Seeing none, no comments from council? Then let's move on to the Transportation Committee. Committee Chair, Christine Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have five agenda items and a sixth miscellaneous one. The first one is, is that we will be bringing legislation forward for the LPA agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Circle Drive project. And this is part of a $475,000 construction of Circle Drive Access Road. And this is the LPA agreement that allows the city to move forward. So the legislation will be coming forward for that. The second agenda item has to do with the Northwest Athens Bike Way Spur Project. And we previously passed an amendment to, for an authorization of paving the bike path. And that needs to be increased by $11,000. And so this will be part of a project that will be done. It's through, part of the monies for this comes from a grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, recreational trails program. And that pays for 100, excuse me, 80 percent of the construction costs of this project. Total project cost is approximately $132,000. And the increase in this authorization and appropriation is for the paving of the new section of the bike path, which was not included in the original project estimate. The next agenda item is for the Safe Routes to School Program. And this is our third cycle of this. The particular legislation we're bringing forward now will be, once again, an LPA agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation to allow this project to move forward. We were awarded $100,000 from the Ohio Department of Transportation to construct stairs from the Armory to Fort Street and from West State Street to the West Elementary School. And we're also discussing light installation with American Electric Power for the project. And this particular legislation now for the Safe Routes to Schools to advertise and accept bids and enter into construction for the Safe Routes to School Stairs project.
And Chris?
Yes.
I would point out this is round two. We've already had an application to work around. No, this is round three. No, this is round two.
This is round two. Previous one, last year's project, included sidewalks on Verona and Baird and a new access ramp on East State Street. And then, next year's project, our third cycle in the funding, will be the Morris Avenue extension
Yeah.
Of the bike path. So we've been, had a successful track record with this. And I'd like to thank the city administration for doing such a good job. Once you get a good reputation with the grant program, it, it tends to stay with us. The next item is for the Carriage Hill Bridge. And we're having the, the anticipated construction is to begin in late July. And we need to amend an earlier ordinance, 4411. And we need, indeed, to increase the authorization and appropriation for the construction and construction engineering of that bridge, up to $200,000.
From what was the original?
The original?
$180,000.
$180,000. So we're only increasing, yeah.
10 percent, 180,000.
$180,000, so total to
And once again, this, this Carriage Hill project, as we've mentioned before, can be considered in our bridge, in the Ohio Department of Transportation's bridge programs as the cost share for our larger project of renovating the Oxbow Bridge next year, so.
And that has occurred, I think, of the
Pardon me?
They've forgotten about that. That has occurred. They've accepted Carriage Hill.
Carriage Hill.
As towards
Okay. We'll have further details that we'll be posting, letting people know about when the actual construction begins so that we've got safe access. Once again, this is the bridge that does go up to an apartment complex, but the bridge itself is owned by the city, so it's not a private bridge.
Actually, the city owns the whole street.
The street going up as well. Okay, thank you for clarifying. The street improvements, legislation that we'll have moving forward is to, where we have bids and we do need some additional money to complete the project. So this will be amending an earlier ordinance, 3111. And it will increase the authorization and appropriation from $55,000 to $60,000 from Fund 271. And it will increase the authorization and appropriation for Fund 572 from $250,000 to $260,000. And I believe that part of this is for the community paving, or the paving at the community And I think, I have one other mention, and I'll turn that over to the mayor. I know you've got a lot of details on that. But this Thursday is Dump the Pump Day.
Dump the Pump Day, yes.
And it's hopefully encouraging people on a nationwide level, and especially, obviously, here in Athens, because we participate in it, to consider ways of not using as much gasoline either, you know, in your car. So consider mass transit, or consider bicycling, or pedestrian, or carpooling. And as part of that, the city is moving forward with several incentives this week on Dump the Pump Day.
Well, I don't know if you saw the advertisement in the Athens News there. Essentially, this was at the Transportation Committee meeting on Thursday. What we'll do is we're going to be waiving the fare for that Thursday, this Thursday the 16th, for ridership, so anybody can ride around for free. In recognition that most of the regular riders also usually buy long-term passes, the decision was is to give them a $2 payback for their next, their next pass. I think we were discussing a deadline expiration date, like all the, you know, gift cards you get have an expiration date. We were talking about taking it to August. Originally, it was July, but we realized some of these people, they usually gain 90-day passes, and we're hoping that they can cycle around to the next 90-day pass as they need it. There's also 30-ride passes and, I think, 180-day passes. But the fact is, the regular riders will probably be the ones who most appreciate it. But at the same time, for new ridership, we're waiving a fee for that day. Just in mentioning, as a miscellaneous, of course, the, the meeting with the transportation is that the Go Bus group was very happy and active. Their ridership is up. They showed us pictures of lines by the convo, and they're trying to get, was it a mobile iPad ticketing system in place? They're all excited about it.
They hope to have it in place in the next couple of months.
I'm less so excited because I don't know how to work it yet, but.
The ridership in the month of May for Go Bus, and this is for the transportation between Columbus, Athens and Columbus, or Athens and Cincinnati, is over 3,000 people.
Wow.
It's really incredible. And the response has just been strong. On Friday, Friday afternoons, it's been selling out at the Convocation Center, and apparently we have some photos of people lining up. And the, the electronic ticketing is in part response to lakefront lines, being used to people, you know, booking two hours ahead of time. And they said they soon realized that students don't necessarily have the time, you know, and their schedule to be able to book two hours ahead of time. So they're trying to take advantage of that, knowing that a lot of students, you know, what happens is they get 30 people to book two hours ahead of time, and in the last 15 minutes before the buses arrive, about 70 additional people are purchasing tickets. So this will also help relieve the load of some of the ticket purchases that have been happening at the community center. So it relieves our staff there. So I think it's a, it'll be an improved situation.
And some of the other dialogues, extend the service to go out the other side to Marietta as well, so they can garner the I-77 corridor as well. As I say, I haven't sat in the meetings religiously, but at the same time, I was excited to hear some good ideas being picked around.
Yeah, that's really great, but, that's really great, no but. But the question is, do we have any word on the, on the logo appliques?
That, they are waiting for the final design. There was a competition, and there, that should be out within a few weeks on that, for the wraps on the bus. I know, you keep driving by and say, what's that plain white bus? We keep looking at it for months at a time, but, yeah, that's
I think one of the issues is that they're switching companies to do the wrap, too. I think that was mentioned at the meeting, but I wasn't really tracking it that much.
They did find out, yeah, in the name of a good company to do that. The other thing that they'll be looking for in the future is just at discussion stage at this point, but a lot of the citizen response was, if we're trying to take a bus into Columbus, but you turn around two hours later and, and leave, then it doesn't really allow people much time to go up, do business, go to a doctor's appointment. They're hoping by September to have this confirmed, well, they'll be extending the time in Columbus to four hours. They'll also be stopping at Ohio State University, OSU Hospital, so people who have doctor's appointments can do that, also to Easton. And then they're also considering adding another stop in, on their Cincinnati route that will stop at University of Cincinnati. So they're listening to citizen input and trying to respond to it.
I think they're going to try spacing that in on the slow days, which is Wednesdays and Saturdays. The idea of trying to make it so you could do a day trip up to Columbus. But again, it's all, everything you do in terms of this type of routing has to be vetted through ODOT, also through Greyhound because the connectivity, interconnectivity requirements are there. So we're working on trying to make it a little bit, you know, and realize, we've only had this running since November, so we're still got kinks to work out on it, but we're getting there.
Are the tickets still cheap?
$10, $10 each way.
Technology is that permanent?
It is not considered permanent.
But it's, it's been a long time, and they don't know when, they have no idea when, you know, probably when the ridership gets real difficult and they have to start adding buses, they'll start talking about it now.
But the idea of also having internet access on the bus, I cannot get over that. And boy, the idea of also hopefully being able to have enough runs to take it to the airport, which would be great. I'm tired of $100 parking bills at the airport to be gone for a few days.
And at this time, we don't charge at the community center, as long as you go in and you register that your vehicle is there and when you'll be returning. So that's what that, a number of people, I believe, is. Isn't that what you did, Council?
No, we got, my wife and I were dropped off by
Oh, okay.
To transport us there. Yeah, I've ridden Go Bus twice, once to Cincinnati at Thanksgiving, and then once to Columbus to catch a flight and had an enjoyable experience both times.
Any other miscellaneous items for the transportation?
I do. And is the Moving Planet Day proposed?
Yes.
At least to begin discussion. We received this from a Taran Wolf, an Ohio University student, who took a leap of great faith in our community. She states, "And signed Athens, Ohio up for Moving Planet Day 2011." It's September 24th. Cities all over the globe will be rallying in an effort to raise grassroots movements to solve the climate crisis. So this is a day, again, some of you had Dump the Pump, we had Earth Day, it's walk, bike, canoe, and to work. It's on a Saturday, September 24th, that, the reason it's being brought before council is the request is to close a portion of Court Street. Everybody always wants to close Court Street. I can tell you that we've checked, it's not a conflict at this time with the football schedule at Ohio University. They had requested the very southern block between Baker Center and Union. My emergency services staff are informing me that's the worst location because of, you either have to leave it open at Baker, and if you've got people coming up, you know, rerouting. So we'd like to some, begin some discussion with them to see. And there's always a cost associated when it's on a Saturday, close the street, have our staff in to do the closure, and then also back to clean it back up. They wanted local businesses to be able to talk about sustainable energy, include Farmer's Market, maybe on Court Street on that day, so. But since it's September 24th, I just wanted to start the discussion at a committee level. We have some internal work to do in terms of looking at costs and
And location.
Yes.
See if we can adjust it so it's not as devastating in terms of traffic flow.
She's asked the Office of Sustainability, they're you, to get involved also, so, but that, they're still in the process of selecting a director, I believe.
Okay.
Want to move on to City Services Committee. Committee Chair Nancy Bane.
Andy asked for a number of ordinances, which I'd like to discuss. I'm not certain there's going to be enough time. Maybe I'll start with the one that's probably the easiest, and that is the request to expend money that's already there for water well cleaning and repair. And so if there is no great objection to this, it's a normal thing, sometimes we call it housekeeping, in the, in the water fund, and so we'll be expending that money if there's any problem. No. Okay, now, on to the wastewater treatment plant. We have had numerous, several at least, not numerous, several discussions on this. And we're almost ready to proceed, I think. And one thing we have to do is next week have a request to, to advertise, accept bids, and enter into a contract for Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant Program, which is the money from, the last, money from the stimulus. And we were awarded it last year, and it's going to be part of our wastewater treatment plant upgrade. And so 55, 50, $550,000 is the amount that we'll be putting forward. Actually, it'll probably be a little bit less than that. 362 is what we're going to probably be asking to get reimbursed from the Department of Development. So it's a typical grant situation. As part of this, we're going to be upgrading our wastewater plant so that we are energy efficient. And we've been doing that in other, will be helping us pay that money. You've all been through this enough to know where that is, right? Roughly? Do you want me to keep going? One more?
We can look away for a little while.
For a little while? Okay, well, the next thing is the big one. And we've talked about doing a major upgrade on the wastewater treatment plant on the liquid component of that treatment. We've looked at it several times, haven't we? I mean, we pretty much have a visual image of what's going to be happening there. We asked Andy to explore the possibility that we go only build one clarifier, and what we found out is that the cost is not going to be, savings are almost nonexistent in that case. So unless I hear somebody jumping on my down and saying, no, 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 we don't want to upgrade it, I think that's the second part. We're going to be increasing our sewer rates and paying for this if everybody's with us. I want to gather on this. What would be the advantages? We're going to eliminate some very bad employment situations with respect to, people have to do jobs that I wouldn't want to do. This, we're going to go to a circular rather than a rectangular bed, which means there won't be places for the odorific stuff to get trapped, which sounds good. And all the things that they had to do to try and keep it less odorous will be removed at standard. The big question I have, though, when I ask the engineers to relook at it, do you want to pay for it over 20 years, or do you want to pay for it over 30 years? And the 20-year pay, pay is going to mean a much, a pretty much larger increase in, in sewer rates. OWDA will allow us to pay it back over 30 years. And it's, the technology is, I don't think, going to change. The only thing that you can see down the road is they may make us pay for elimination of nutrients, the phosphate removers. We used to have those, actually, in the plant, but probably not right away. Well, I also neglected to say we're going to ultraviolet and getting chlorine out of there, too. So 20 or 30, we, we don't have numbers yet, so I'm kind of at a disadvantage asking you about this, aren't I? Let's look at a timeline and think about this so we can maybe next week make a decision on 20 or 30. I don't have the engineers' report back yet, but week make a decision on 20 or 30. I don't have the engineers' report back yet, but we're going to have to pay almost $1 million for engineering, and that's pretty much commensurate with what we did last time, when we did the solids part, and then we did it again, and then we did it another time, because the technology changed. And it's really too bad. We won't have that problem this time. But the Clean Water Act 1988 was met barely, but it takes about a year to design it, so after we, say we want to borrow up to $800,000, because we're going to raise the rates and pay for it, then the next thing is it goes to design, it takes a year, and then EPA has to check it. Last time, it took them nine months. And so, and then you have to advertise, accept bids. And so we're talking really about a 2014, 20, or 2013 construction period in this. It's down the road a bit. And so what will happen is if we increase the rates a small amount, we'll be able to pay for the engineering, we won't have to borrow on that. And I think they pretty much decided to use the OWDA approach. And the good, other good thing about all of this is we will be having quite a bit of money released if we wait till 2013, because we'll have a note that's already, that'll be paid off this year and then in 2013. So we have some money that we're already saving to pay off loans, we can start to implement and pay on the new loan. So that will help offset the problem you were noticing, which is the higher costs for people. So next time, I do have a handout. I know we're on a tight schedule today, so I won't go over it, but what I would like to do next time, in addition to water well cleaning, have us borrow money to do the engineering, a small, just a small amount compared to the $12 million we're talking about, and then also to transfer the funds to get the energy efficiency lottery problems. Anybody? Okay. Yeah?
No problems. Just a quick question on the rate increases. Sometimes we do this per bill, and sometimes it's based on usage? Would these be on usage?
Both. I'd like to talk to Paula and find out how she's doing water, make sure they're organized. It's actually, I did cost it out on a typical, which is $4,000, and the cost would go up from roughly $25 a month to $28 a month. So it'll be $3 for the first five years. After that, it could be more. Actually, if you're raising it 3% in 23 years, you'd have doubled your, your rates. But we'll see what happens when the engineers get back to us. Okay.
3% great.
What?
We're just working out the numbers.
Seventy divided by three equals 23. That's what I was going, oh my goodness, it would double the rates in 23 years. Okay.
If I remember really, we weren't talking about doing 3% all the way along, but...
No, the engineers didn't do that, but yeah.
Yeah, they were basically talking about three in the front end, two depending on what the...
Yeah, and that's basically what we're, well, the note I got said every year, but I, you know, I just, I can't see that, because it would be doubled. And so, and plus, it'll give you guys something to do in a year or two, right? Since the money will be tied up. All right.
Other questions?
Any miscellaneous, so we can move on? It's funny how you can spend $12 or $13 million, and there's not much discussion. $2,000, everybody goes crazy. Yeah, we've discussed this multiple times. Okay, I'm adjourned.
Moving on to our special session. It's on or about 7:30 PM. We do have a forum with all members of council present. And of course, special sessions are abbreviated agendas. Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 4811 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a new dump truck for the Public Works Department. Member Molly's like.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of 4811. And this is for purchase of a new dump truck, and this one is a slightly smaller one than one we had proposed earlier in the year. It will be less cost for the city. It will also have the feature of the heated bed that will allow us to use it during the year, earlier in the year for our own asphalt repairs, earlier in the season. It will also have a snow blade with it, so it'll allow us to use it year-round. And the approximate cost is $82,500.
Motion second for adoption. Further comments. Member Bane.
Chris, how old is the truck we're replacing with this?
I believe it is a 1990...
Ninety-four, is it?
Or 95.
Yeah, one of, one of our problems, yeah, and one of the reasons why I wanted to stress that is we've been really very conservative on purchasing vehicles, and I think we, this is one we absolutely have to do. But in a few years, there's going to be a big bill for improvement unless we do some, like this one, 25, yeah.
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years, yeah. So it's, you know, even though times are tough, it's a must-do.
Other comments on ordinance 48. All those in favor of adoption?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 4911 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions to add Chapter 3.111 Domestic Registry. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 4911.
Second.
This ordinance adds to our provisions in the city, the option for unmarried partners to declare their partnership. We're talking about heterosexual as well as homosexual partners. I think, member Gosney passed out a copy of our proposed partnership. For a $25 fee, partners can register in the mayor's office through the, and this would be handled by the Service Safety Director's office. So between the two of them, this would be a registration that would, would be notarized, but it would not, we need to emphasize, it would not, at this point, offer any legal options for signers of this partnership agreement. Possibly in the future, yes, but not right now. This would be a, just a declaration of a partnership.
Other comments? Sir Mayor Wile.
Again, this is part of three ordinances that were suggested to us, could for us by constituency. The third one, of course, is domestic partner benefits, and that's one thing we're still chewing around. But this is, this would be part of that suite of legislation.
Certainly.
And I think it's part of it to make it an inclusive city as possible.
Service Safety Director.
I just wanted to note that we have, I'm a notary, and Charlene, the mayor's secretary, is a notary. We offer our services free of charge, so do that in advance.
Well, you could charge them.
No, we don't.
For a little bit of money.
Then you have to file it with a court, and it's, you know, declare it on your taxes. Free charge.
Okay. I still move adoption of ordinance 4911.
And I thought we already had a second, didn't we?
Did we?
Yes.
I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 5011 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 13 General Offenses to add Chapter 13.02.07 Intimidation. Member Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance O-50-11. Thank you. We discussed this in committee as, as well as at first reading and second. This particular ordinance is in the spirit of harmony and inclusiveness and tolerance to our community. Essentially, what we're doing is tweaking subsection B on intimidation, which is stated here, "No person shall violate 13.02.04 menacing, 13.03.12 criminal damaging or endangering, or 13.03.13 criminal mischief by reason of actual or perceived sexual orientation, gender, identity, or expression, marital or familial status, age or disability, as defined by Ohio Revised Code Section 3304.11A, of another person or group of persons." Again, I think this is in an effort to make our community, and to ensure the rights of others, and add to the overall harmony, and protect those that have been in the past subject to this.
Further discussion? Mayor Wile.
Oh, well, go ahead.
Oh. Council members first.
Along with the last ordinance, I think this is really important to show that we treat all members of our community equally, and we value them all, all the same, and to protect them and their families, and to make sure that, like you said, we are an inclusive community, and we welcome everyone in the same way.
Any other comments? Mayor Wile.
This as a ordinance takes 30 days to go into effect, because there's no emergency clause, right? That's what I thought.
And you're playing us?
Oh, no, that got to be a fast discussion, and we didn't see an emergency clause in it, but there wasn't any emergency as far as I could tell.
Okay. All those in favor of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ordinance 5211 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title V Public Utilities to add Chapter 5.07 Stormwater Regulations. Who will be speaking to this? Member Bane.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 5211.
Second.
5211 begins the process of moving Athens into the new requirements for stormwater management. If you listen to, well, it depends how you listen to the news, but sandwiched in all of the GOR and other stuff is a discussion in various places of this. We aren't the only ones, but right now, we are going to be liable for managing our stormwater. It's especially a difficult place to apply this. We have many places that have no storm sewers on them, places that weren't platted, where roads were developed into lots, and so it'll be a challenge. But I do think the engineer is up to the challenge, because he's already talking about lining one of the storm sewers, which will, one of the sanitaries, which will cut down the problems in, inflow and infiltration, change the water dynamic. And so I have great confidence in seeing this move forward.
Other comments on ordinance 52? Member Butler.
Just a quick question, and correct me if I'm wrong, Member Bane. This is also staying ahead of the game with regulations that might be heading...
The EPA.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Member Paul.
This is actually one of the second steps that we have taken, because we've also started regulating impermeable surfaces on development and such to help reduce stormwater runoff. And so this is another step towards better environmental regulation in our city.
And it took a while, because we do have already quite a few things on the books that had to be made to correspond to the model code that the EPA sent us, so, including my own development ordinance and other things of that sort.
Other comments? Just one for me. I doubt that anybody will have an opportunity to vote on anything that will have more of an impact on cleaning up our freshwater rivers than what you will tonight.
I hope so.
All those in favor of ordinance 52?
Aye.
Opposed? After that statement, vote against it.
Go ahead.
Opposed, y'all. Come on. The ordinance is passed. Ordinance 5311, an ordinance amending ordinance O-2709 to increase sewer rates in accordance with the Athens City Code. Again, Member Bane.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 5311. 5311 is...
Pays for everything.
Yes, it pays for the above activity. Previously, it was paid for out of the sewer fund. One thing that we did do recently, for example, we did the storm sewer on Mill Street, and we have intensification of land use, and the demand on the infrastructure is there, and we use the sewer funds to do it. Luckily, we use CDBG to fix the sewer, the sanitary sewer, so we have a really modern system and a new road coming in. So remember that when you get aggravated at the problems on Mill Street. But in order to pay for this, we're going to separate the two out, generate about $100,000, at least initially, to be used for strictly stormwater improvements. And we've already heard about people who have issues with stormwater. I could add my name to the list, but I won't. Okay? So stormwater is something that we're going to all be more aware of as we have more intense storms, difficult times ahead. So we're starting an income stream and expect to see changes in this in the future.
Other comments? Mayor Wile.
Again, this is in parallel with 5211. We're putting the regulations place. As Nancy mentioned, they, the storm sewer fund is really often of the street department and the sewer department. There's really no fund, money that comes into that in particular. There are sections of town that do not have any infrastructure that we'll have to build, if not improve. And your commentary about making cleaner rivers, we can hope everybody upriver from us is doing the same thing.
And not fracking, right?
And not fracking, yes.
You know, we can't vote on what people upriver from us do, but we're in control.
We can get a thank you from everybody downriver. How's that sound?
Guys will thank us.
Are we up to 53? All those in favor of ordinance 5311?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. 5211 is an ordinance amending ordinance O-310, an Athens City Code Title V Public Utility Regulations. Again, Member Bane.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 5411.
Second.
Mr. President, 5411 actually reduces the tap-in fee to the storm sewer, basing it on a size requirement that we're going to be using in future applications of the code. So now you'll see some fees go down with this. X number of square feet, and the tap-in fee is quite modest.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 5411?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. On ordinance 5511 is an ordinance provided for the issuance, I'm sorry, let me start again. O-5511 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $750,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring and constructing improvements to East State Street and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 5511.
Second.
This ordinance is one of, a line of ordinances. When, when we did the initial work on East State Street, it cost us about $4 million. We financed that through bonds. We are reissuing bonds in the amount of $750,000. That means we paid off $3,255,000 of our debt from doing the repairs on East State Street. Order, is this, how often, this would run for a...
For a year.
A year?
A year. We use our TIF funds to make these payments.
And is there an estimate that this would not necessarily be our last, but we're getting...
No, it was $1 million starting this year.
We knocked it down about a quarter million to...
Yeah, but last year, we only paid down $200,000. It was 1.2, and so this year, we're paying $250,000. And we have had some reduction in our TIF revenue, but the fund is steady and regular. So, yeah, we've come a long way, but these are, this is now, actually, this is the first time we're just doing a one-year rollover note. Before that, these bonds were issued nationally and went out to bid through our bond council. But because they're now under $1 million, we're just going to do it locally and do a one-year note, and a year from now. June 1st, I believe, is when it's actually due, which is when the bonds were due in the past years. So we, you know, interest rates are great right now, and we pay down what we can a year from now.
Interest rates are great for the park.
Right, dollars, yes. Clarify that.
You save money and won't live on it, I tell you that.
And the rate is, local bank is fairly low.
It is.
.45 is I would see in this one.
I think so. I think this one came in really low. We haven't even been at 1% for at least a year. .65, .75 is the most we've paid for any notes this year, but...
This is part of the TIF that we assess the properties up and down East State Street, certain parcels there. Remember, some of it got reduced because the assessment went down. We'll probably, depending on how much, how much we put into the next rollover, this depends on how much improvement we have to do on East State Street. I'm sure you've been on East State Street and realized it's going to need a repaving sooner or later. I don't know when the, that's in the mix, but it's going to come up, and that's where the TIF money would go back into the system for, for the construction side, just so you know.
You know, a couple of comments. Ray Azler, when he was Service Safety Director, and I was complaining about how crowded East State Street is already getting, he said, "Bill, that was designed for 40,000 cars a day, and we're running 45,000 cars a day on it. So who knows when something else is going to have to be done?" And I don't know what that something else would be, but I think TIF financing has almost been miraculous in the way that it has worked out for us. I, to be able to handle all the infrastructure like we did, seems to have worked like clockwork. Paul, you're aware?
Realize two things have changed. Realize two things have changed on that. The landscape for the TIF, if you remember, some of the money goes to the school system, so they don't lose out. The previous arrangement was such that they would actually register that as a loss. The legislation's changed so they don't, so therefore the incentive for TIFs has kind of decreased. And probably more of a Transportation Committee assessment is that the next bottleneck, of course, is the bridge where thirty-three crosses over East State Street. That's the discussion that's been going on within the city. But that's further down the line, I believe.
Discussion with ODOT about -- we're looking at all the inter-exchanges, but particularly there, and then again at Stimson, and that's with ODOT. That's some years out. Twenty seventeen.
Well, I'll tell you about intersection with Stimson. Anyone that gets on there and wants to get off on East State Street, that is dangerous and probably shouldn't even be allowed.
It works well during summertime when there's no traffic.
And what's terrible if a UU is still there and its farmer's market is impacted.
On the other hand, I've talked to various people, say, "Oh, forty-five thousand cars per day, ka-ching." So there's two ways of looking at this, just so you know.
Yeah, really. Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance fifty-five eleven?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance fifty-six eleven is an ordinance amending Athens City's zoning code Title twenty-three to include sweepstakes internet cafe business uses. Member Paul.
Thank you. I move to adopt fifty-six eleven.
Second.
This is to update our Title twenty-three zoning code to include sweepstakes, internet cafes, which are not places that you go and have coffee and use your computer. They're seen by many as places that are similar to gambling areas, and so we wanted to make sure that their use and their impacts are put in appropriate places within the city by updating the zoning code. We've had numerous public hearings. This was passed by the Planning Commission and put forward as a recommendation, and it's been given several public hearings and meetings with the committees here.
Other comments?
You were having a special session.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance fifty-six eleven?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. We're moving on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance fifty-seven eleven, authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contract for construction of the Circle Drive access road.
Mr. President, I move that we consider this under suspension.
Second.
And the purpose of the suspension is that we are needing to begin the construction work this summer and need the agreement in place.
Motion on second for suspension on ordinance fifty-seven. Further discussion on suspension only. All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Okay. Mr. President, I move adoption of fifty-seven eleven. Good, there was a second?
Yes.
This again is for the -- to allow the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement for the construction of the Circle Drive access road. This is part of a $475,000 project, $400,000 of which is funded through an Appalachian Regional Commission grant. The other $75,000 comes from the Permissive Wheel Tax Fund to twenty-six.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance fifty-eight eleven is an ordinance declaring the power ladder truck no longer needed for municipal purpose. Member Isley. I'm sorry. Onto ordinances for first reading. Ordinance sixty-one eleven is an ordinance amending ordinance oh forty-four eleven, authorizing construction of the Carriage Hill Bridge rehabilitation project number two sixty-one. Member Isley.
Thank you, Mr. President. As described earlier in our committee meeting, what this does is amend an earlier ordinance forty-four eleven, which authorized the construction of the Carriage Hill Bridge, and what it does is increases that original appropriation of $180,000 to $200,000, so an increase of $20,000. And this would come from Street Rehabilitation Fund five seven two.
Do you need suspension?
Other comments? Is there a need for suspension on this?
Yes.
I guess.
Mr. President, I ask -- I back up and ask that we consider this ordinance under suspension of those.
Motion on second. Further discussion on suspension only? The reason for suspending?
The reason for suspending this is that we do need to complete the Carriage Hill Construction Rehabilitation Project, and that needs to begin in July.
Other comments? All those in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of sixty-one eleven.
Second.
And the description of this has been previously mentioned, but once again, what this is doing is increasing our appropriation on this particular project from $180,000 to $200,000. It will allow us to complete this -- it will allow us to complete this rehabilitation project of the Carriage Hill Bridge this summer.
Other comments? Yes, Member Bang.
Not to intrude too much, but I just thought we should also add that this money we're spending will be credited against our --
Correct. Part of the larger bridge rehabilitation program with the higher department transportation.
Money will spend in that credit.
Absolutely.
All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance sixty-two eleven is an ordinance amending ordinance thirty-one eleven, authorizing street paving and repairs and declaring an emergency. Member Isley.
I ask that we consider this under suspension of the rules.
Sorry.
And very much so, that we need to -- we all know the condition of some of our streets in the city and the repairs that have been scheduled for various streets, and these will be completed this summer.
And what better time than when OU isn't all rowdy and full of the streets and all that?
Absolutely.
And it's under contract. Come up with a better reason than that, okay. Other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance is adopted. That is the last item on our agenda tonight, and given that this --
That was just a suspension.
Well, I apologize to you. I do get ahead of myself.
Mr. President, I move adoption?
Second.
Of sixty-two eleven.
Now, that vote was suspension, everybody.
And second.
Motion on second to adopt. Other comments?
What happens when you don't wear a tie?
Okay.
All right.
Any other civil comments that anyone cares to make? All those in favor of? What?
Oh, did I make the comments?
Did you make them?
Yes, I did.
We have -- Nancy seconded it. I think I'm back on track. I wouldn't say for sure. I'm old. I've been here too long. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is adopted now. That's the last ordinance on our agenda in a special session. It's a limited agenda, so we are adjourning, now going into a committee meeting of the Safety Services Committee. Committee Chair, Member Coon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first thing on the agenda for the Safety Committee tonight is noise, and so I'd like to ask if any council members have any comments before we invite members of the audience. Member Paul.
I've gotten several comments about this discussion that we've had about the noise ordinance and the implementation of the noise ordinance. And people have said, "Oh, it's a compromise." And I don't think that's a fair way of describing the process that we are trying to do on council. As we've seen by some of the earlier ordinances that we passed tonight, citizens are always welcome to bring new ordinances, new issues to council so that we can act upon them. The domestic partnership regulations are -- is exactly one of those examples. I think that it behooves council and citizens to be able to communicate and to have dialogue. And to -- I think that some of the communications that we've had over this issue has been unnecessarily tensionous.
Contentious.
Contentious, thank you. I have a thirteen. Calvary is really. So, you know, I think that it makes sense for people to come forward, like the student committee has come forward to say, "Hey, some of the things we don't think are fair, such as the administration and some of the penalty, how the penalties are applied." And that's what our job is, to listen to citizens, to all citizens, and to put forward either changes, or if we don't feel that changes are necessary, but to have a conversation and sit there and say, "Well, it's a compromise," or "It's not," doesn't give the dialogue fair hearing. So that's one thing, and I think that that's our job, is to listen to all constituents on this process.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. You know, this is always a contentious issue. For many years, it has been. And it came to a head when I think the police department started enforcing it in a way that was effective and a way that they're continuing to enforce it, in my opinion. However, there were problems that some student members, student members of our community had with certain parts of it, and so they came to the police chief in an effort to find a balance, I think to find common ground between a ballot initiative proposal, which they put together, and what the current ordinance is. And there were a number of things that both parties talked about and tried to find ways to work around in order to find something that would still maintain a strong and effective ordinance, but giving students what they felt was more of a fair shake, I think. And I guess students isn't the correct terminology, giving people that would have a problem with the way the noise ordinance was being enforced. So during that process, there was, I think, an attempt to find what was best for the community as a whole, not just what one person wanted or another person wanted, but what would work for Athens. And so now we're looking at it from, I think, from a lot of different angles, and I'm anxious to hear what members of the audience have to say about this tonight.
Member Butler?
Thank you. And I appreciate you bringing this up for discussion. It's been on my mind for a while. I definitely support and acknowledge that this is a quality of life issue for all citizens of Athens, regardless of age, because we've received a number of complaints regarding noise from students that are serious about their studies, as well as people who are longtime residents. So again, I think this is an issue that is important for all. In my discussions with the gentleman by the name of Bill Ward, who's the co-director in the City of Burlington, Vermont, he's a former police lieutenant, so my discussions with him, he indicates that in Burlington, they don't have a lot of issues with parties because they're very serious about their fines and violations, beginning with a first violation of $200, a second violation within twenty-four months is a $300 fine, and then a $500 fine for the third and subsequent offense, which the third and subsequent offenses could be considered a criminal proceeding as well. So I do like this idea of increasing the fines and maybe decriminalizing this idea a little bit and moving the first two violations out of a legal issue, making it more of a city fine or a ticket, and then with the third violation, similar to what they do in Burlington, Vermont. And again, this is in discussions with Director Ward about the quality of life that they're experiencing in Burlington. It's a much larger town with a smaller university, but again, his work there with the university, they spent a considerable amount of time during pre-college to educate the students about what's expected of them as they transition into off-campus housing. I know we're doing some of that here at the university, but my guess is that there is room for improvement as well. And I know in my life, anytime I've experienced consequences, it was an opportunity for me to learn and eradicate my behavior or make changes. So again, I believe, too, that concerns we have in our community are serious for quality of life, and I don't want to see the hours change. I believe, what is it, ten on weeknights? Is that correct? I support that as well. I don't think that should change. And I do believe that we should decriminalize this to a certain sense, but increase the fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Are there member -- Service Safety Director?
I just wanted to state that I believe you've all received a proposal that did come from the police chief in response to an inquiry from administration when it was pointing out the criminality, the nature, criminal nature of these noise ordinance offenses. And so the proposal he's provided changes that a first violation shall be administrative with a $75 fine, and if they pay that within thirty days, that's their first one. If not, then it does move into a minor misdemeanor. He did not go anywhere beyond that, changing the first offense. And I hear Councilman Butler talking about the possibility of two, but this was just in response to the -- it really, it is a criminal record they have for noise, and they cannot do anything about that criminal record for a full year on, you know, one noise violation. And then it's my understanding it can only expunge one item, so.
Something that I noticed from Vermont is that it's not just the person who owns the house or who's the tenant, it's also that they consider all people at the party part of the noise violation. And I think that on one level, that seems pretty fair, because, I mean, we've all had instances where, you know, possibly parties getting out of control, and as a person who's the tenant, all of a sudden you have this record. That was something that was interesting, besides the amount of violation, the amount of cost for the violation, is that all people were considered, you know, liable for. It's not something that necessarily we should do here, but I think that it's something that other communities maybe have had good luck with. And looking at it, I'm not sure if that would be in line with how our ordinance is written, but I also think that I agree with Mr. Butler is that $75 is fairly minimal fine. I mean, it costs more for us to just administer all the paperwork.
Well, the standard right now through court has been $150 fine with $120 waived for four hours' community service. So essentially, $30 is the economic impact as it stands right now. So this would indeed be an increase, but remove the criminality of that first offense. I think when you speak to the -- all the residents are considered liable, I wouldn't consider ours any different, other than that might enact a nuisance party ordinance that's already in place, so.
It's been suggested that we take just a tiny little break to allow those folks who'd like to leave. I mean, you're all welcome to stay, but if you would like to leave, now would be the time.
Are we still in discussion of this?
They were moving around. I thought they wanted to go.
And that's all I had to say. I know that there are residents here, citizens who would like to speak to this.
Yes, would you come to the podium? Would you come to the podium, please, and state your name and address?
Yeah, all that stuff, Jean.
They can't hear you out in TB land.
Yeah, scary, yeah, but it's not necessary.
Jean Ammaral, 187 North Congress Street. I've been following this not as closely as I might have, but one of the things that I saw was, might be changing, is the need to, whether, at what time or whether or not you needed to call the police in order to report a noise violation. I would like to, I thought that the new enforcement was a better deal. I wouldn't want to sacrifice that. I think that my personal experience is, is that often, not as often as it used to be, but occasionally at least, midnight on Friday or Saturday night, the noise is still persisting, and I have to get myself out of bed and try to figure out where it's coming from, walk the street even, to be able to call the police to say, "There's a noise, there's a party at a certain address." This is, I don't think I should have to do that. I think the police should be able to drive by and to be able to drive by and to be able to just enforce it. And, I mean, to me, that's just, and anything less than that is just enabling the students, or the people having the party, it's students, come on, nine times out of 10 of it, the people having the party. And so, there's been times I've waited till the next day and talked to people about it, and they say, yeah, we'll never do it again, but then, next time, one of their friends comes over and takes out the drum set, and they're not even home, and, you know, that kind of thing. So, I just feel like it's, I would like to see, enable the police even more so to, if anything, to just, to, you know, to enforce the ordinance, not to cut it back in any way. And I do like the idea of decriminalization, I'm hearing about, and I also like the idea of increasing fines, to really make it stick. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? With any, Mayor?
I would like to add that you have, okay, Jim's getting up.
Oh, it's coming.
I'd like to add that you really have several formats on the table right now. You have the present ordinance, you have a policy that we put in place, you have a table ordinance from last year of July, I think it was.
I don't think that's going to be untabled.
Well, no, it's off, it's been tabled, I should say.
Yes.
And then you have this response from Chief Pyle.
Yes.
And again, you, it's, from my point of view and administration point of view, it's pretty much in your court of what you want to do. And it's not that I wash my hands of it, because I know we have to, we have to administer it, which is why the chief was involved in it, to make it what is practical. But, you know, this is, you know, the discussion whether we bring him here or not was one of the things that was brought up, and it's like, really, we've got all the information ready right now. It was your decision.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Silleri?
Jim Silleri, 36 Fairview Avenue in Athens, one of the longtime residents. I've been in town for 37 years. Every citizen has the right to the peaceful enjoyment of his home. And that's not just between the hours of midnight and 7:00 AM, that's 24 hours a day. So, when you set some artificial time of yelling and screaming, say, from midnight to 7:00 AM, and I'll give you an example. On Sunday mornings after Halloween, for many years, I go down and clean the glass out of our parking lot. And I was down there one Sunday morning at 7:30 in the morning, one young man, two doors down, screaming "F you!" at the top of his lungs, I'll bet for five minutes. That's a violation. It's not a violation at 5:00 till 7:00, and not at 7:30 in the morning. We've seen from city council this evening how sensitive they are about our citizens. Well, we need to have the same sensitivity about all of our citizens, and the right to live in our homes peacefully. Now frankly, I think that the enforcement by the police during the past school year yielded some good results, because frankly, we didn't have the difficulties on normal Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights that existed prior to that time. And I think it's really significant, and if this figure is accurate, I was kind of shocked, that throughout the year, they only issued 10 onsite, non-complaint violations between the hours of 10 o'clock and midnight. So, golly, I'm thinking, what is, what's the students' complaint, if that's the case? I think the mere fact that they could make those onsite violations without a complaint had the desired effect. And I really felt that the job was done, and done well. And frankly, only having 10 in that period of time shows tremendous restraint on the part of the police. The fests pose different problems. Because the noise ordinance itself doesn't work well in those situations. When you allow huge numbers to congregate in residential zone, it becomes, and you have outdoor bands or outdoor DJs, that becomes an entertainment venue. Entertainment venues are only permitted in business districts, not residential districts. When you permit mobile, commercial businesses to go enter those zones, I think that's a violation of the zoning code. When you permit the advertising, commercial advertising of beer signs in a residential zone, that's a violation of the zoning code. And I think the citizens of Athens have a right to have all of the laws enforced. The reason that the noise ordinance doesn't work well, when you've got 6,000 or 7,000 people in that area, and I don't know how many police, but outnumbered tremendously, the police obviously can't enforce those ordinances. The police are in a position where they have to react. Unfortunately, this year, it was somewhat, somewhat better, as far as no horrible things happening. But why do I have to sit in my house for eight or 10 hours on that day, with my doors and windows closed, listening to the thumping, pulsating bass that existed that entire day? Where are my rights at that point? Now, I was on the committee that was fashioning this new ordinance before it was tabled, and the amplification of sound, I think, took up a fair amount of our time. And frankly, outdoor bands and outdoor amplification of DJ music in residential zone is inconsistent with the peaceful enjoyment of the neighborhoods. And I would urge council to ban those amplifications of music, particularly in residential zones, for two reasons. One, it encourages huge crowds, makes them an entertainment venue in violation of the zoning code, and it's clearly inconsistent with the peaceful enjoyment of the neighbors.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak?
Phil Seffernick, 34 Grobner Street. Friends, Emerald, and Silleri, speak my mind.
Anybody else?
John Calhoun, as of last week, 102 Second Street. My new lease doesn't start till August. So, I already talked to you guys a lot about this noise issue, and I guess I don't have a lot of commentary about street fests. I really, I really kind of agree with what Mr. Silleri said. I don't think about street fests and the noise issue, because the noise issue and street fests really just don't work. So, I guess I'll talk about what I attempted when I tried to bring this to city council. Last fall, students said to me, when I was on Student Senate, they said, John, this seems unreasonable. We don't know how this happened. We heard there was someone working on the noise issue last spring. How did we get here? We're not happy. And I said, okay. So, I spoke to you guys last spring. I spoke to then-chief of police, mayor, last fall, and a couple of members of city council. And it felt like there wasn't any room to move. There was, there was no way, it seemed, for us to get from where we currently sat, to students feeling better about the situation they were in, especially with the problems they had concerning getting noise violations because the roommates were away when the house got a warning, or heaven forbid, being taken away in handcuffs for noise, which has happened twice this year. It is rare, but it does happen. And a general sense that students weren't being listened to when these issues come up. So, we put together this ballot initiative idea, you know, let's investigate that and see. And the more we engaged in the conversation, because as it turned out, there was still conversation to be had, the more we realized, maybe there is an alternative. And so, what I and members of the No Noise Task Force attempted to do was fashion the best conception of what students said they felt was important with what we were hearing in meetings like this, and what was currently in law. And so, the time changed from 10 to 12. I've been hearing a lot of resistance on that. That's not important to me. That doesn't seem to be important to members of the No Noise Task Force. It was something suggested that we threw out there, and we'd see if it would stick. What's more important to us is the decriminalization and resisting a huge increase in fines. We picked $75 because it seemed reasonable, especially, especially in the context of it just taking two seconds. You know, a police officer drives by, boom, $70 fine. A police officer drives by again, another $75 fine. Police officer has to drive by again a week later, now you're going to court. You know, it seemed reasonable to us, and it still maintains the structure that Police Chief Pyle has put into effect. So, there's still that per se time limit, and there's still police officers doing what people seem to like them doing. And so, that is what we put together. And that's why we, I have been calling it a compromise, is because it was the best conception of what is and what we wanted put together. So, I strongly urge you to consider it and vote on it. I especially like the first offense warning part, where students, it's one of the big complaints we have, is students don't know they've been warned. They don't know that their roommate's got a violation three weeks ago, or last quarter. But with that first violation warning with the signature on the back of the ticket, everyone in the room knows about it. So, yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes.
Beverly Flanagan, 132 North Lancaster. I would support decriminalization of the first offense only, and I would also support raising the fines. $75 is nothing for a five-member household. Think of that. I would like at least $100, and then an increase from them up, perhaps 200, 300, and so on. Keep the time limits as they are. I think everyone's satisfied with those, but let's toughen up on the penalties. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all? Thank you all for coming and speaking. And I would propose that we begin an ordinance that would change the current noise ordinance that we have, and that is being so well enforced by the police department. And that only changes the penalty portion of the current ordinance. Member Sands?
No, go ahead. I'm waiting to see what you say.
Oh.
I have a, we have a proposal from the chief, that originally said he criminalized the first two offenses, and the last one that I see in my council mailbox is just the first violation.
What fell out was what John Calhoun was referring to, was if all members signed off on the first violation, saying this house has now all been notified that someone had a noise violation, that essentially became a warning. So, that's something to still think about, I guess, council members. So, then, if you, it's kind of a waiver of the fine, if all acknowledge that this occurred, and then they know from then on, offense time. I think I've captured it.
Yeah, if I could just comment on that. The police chief spoke very highly of that warning, that first one being a warning if all the residents sign it, because it creates a paper trail for the police department. So, there's, you know, there's no excuses, oh, we didn't get a warning, or, you know, our roommate's not here this week, that had that, so you can't, it's not fair for you to ticket us. And I think it's a good education to the students, everyone that lives in the house that are here on notice now, that if we come by again, you know, you sign this paper, and you'll be receiving a citation. So, I really, I liked that part of that, and that was actually a student idea that a student group came up with and passed by the police chief, and then it made it into one of these drafts.
So, am I hearing that we need to put that back in? It's not in this recent?
I would like to see it in there. I mean, it's up to council as a whole, of course.
I guess my concern about a warning is, and I'm a little surprised to hear the chief supports it, but on one level, my concern would be that it seems like a waste of time, that they, the police departments have, the officers have jobs to do, and I don't feel like they need to be slapping hands, or wrists, or whatever. I feel that they're busy people and provide a service that is insurmountable. I just don't feel like they need to be, I don't feel, that's their job to educate at that point. I mean, again, I'm all for having a good time, but not at the expense of someone else's quality of life. And if we're being honest to you, if alcohol is part of the equation, then those people receiving a warning, if they're under the influence, then may not be a sound judgment, and it may not even register them that they're getting a warning. That's my, that's my take on it.
Member Bean?
I'm a little concerned about how this paper would be circulated, saved, maintained, and it seems awfully cumbersome. It seems like a solution from someone that doesn't really get involved in the day-to-day of this. I mean, what would they do? Have it online? Or on their, you know, because you say, well, we've already had an, you know...
They already have a tracking mechanism. I don't know if they've established a spreadsheet or something similar to how the Sol Waste Liter Control Officer has a tracking method to know for second, third, fourth, or fifth.
I'm, I'd like to keep it simple. I mean, that's just my opinion.
It does not remove officer discretion, which occurs now.
Of course. We understand that.
And I like to say, in the past, you know, you could drive down Mill Street, 1231, and hear parties and just blaring. Now, you have to seek it out. It's like, I found one, I'll eat it. But it's significantly different. They're still gathering, they're still talking, or they're inside, and, you know, having a party. So, it's not disrupting the neighborhood. So, officers still have discretion.
I guess, you know, my thought is that the learning opportunity is paying the fine. When I was, when I was out speeding in my dad's car as an adolescent, I got tagged with a pretty hefty fine, because I was violating the law. I was speeding on 271 outside of Cleveland, and I slapped with over $100, and that was a big deal as a young adult. And that was a learning opportunity for me.
It is part, I mean, we are educating a class of juniors off-campus every year.
Right.
We're aware of that. That's why off-campus living is, whether it be from your garbage to noise to...
Right.
What about the, I'm sorry, member Fall?
I want to reemphasize that even if it's before midnight, and there's, it's blaring, that it's still, you know, personally, spring, when there's, you know, finally, it's nice, and my garden is really beautiful, and there's no mosquitoes, and all the flies haven't come out from all the garbage cans around me, is a really nice time to spend outside. But every afternoon, every weekend of spring, whether it's fest time, or there's a fest going on, there is noise going on. And I'm not the only one who hears it, who complains about it. My neighbors complain to me all the time, that, you know, that is a noise violation. And that, you know, we need to identify that it's not that you get to make a huge amount of noise all the time with incredibly loud music, or DJs, or whatever, up until 12 on Friday, or up until 10 on Thursday. That, and that, it's, on one level, my, you know, I have two kids, and they're, I mean, they complain about it all the time too, because it keeps them up. Okay. That people should know, and they shouldn't need necessarily a warning, that they have a lot of noise coming out of their house. And that, you know, here, that it's, we have to educate people. So, what are they doing, you know, anybody? What are, what's going on at home? And we're not parents, and we need to, they need to take responsibility. And that every weekend, Saturday afternoon or Saturday morning at 10 o'clock, it starts, you know. And it's not just because of the place where I live. I know people who live way on the other side of the north, you know, the near east side, who hears it because of the hills. So, you know, people need to realize that there's a noise ordinance going on all the time, and be respectful. And I think that's what Jim Silleri was trying to get at.
And I did want to address Mr. Silleri, the per se is still in there. And I did want to address Mr. Silleri, the per se is still in there. A solid from the FAS, and he indicated he understood that, that it requires a complaint during the other hours.
Right. But, I mean, I think that-
But at the FAS, it's unreasonable to think-
Right. But every, you know-
The illegal multiple house, I should say.
Yes. Well, I mean, people complain to me. I get a huge amount of complaints on the weekend, you know? And I guess I could just have a little hotline to the police department for every Saturday.
Speaker Dial.
You know, I mean, it's just that people need to realize it, you know? I just, I think that people are getting kind of tired because they think that, people think that, oh, well, it's not twelve o'clock midnight on Friday and so I can have as loud of music as I want. And it's just free time. So, you know, I think that this warning idea is, personally, I think that it looks like a lot of paperwork. I can understand the paper trail and I can understand the education, but at the same time, I'd like to see, you know, I agree with member Butler, that paying a big old fine helps to educate people even more than signing a piece of paper.
I like the idea of a fine a lot more than kids leaving this town with a criminal record.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I'm still reading it in there on the, you know, third thing because, come on, part of what we get paid for doing in this town is educating and putting up with kids between the ages of eighteen and twenty-two. And, you know, you didn't get a criminal record for driving too fast. The people can get a criminal record for playing their music too loud. So, you know, I, that's the one thing I don't want us to hand out easily.
Thank you. Member Gosney?
Member Fall's point is really good. The noise ordinance is in effect twenty-four hours a day and a lot of people don't realize that. I do want to comment on the warning, proposed warning as a first ticket or notice. One of the things that I heard was that enforcement seems somewhat arbitrary and it's important to know that there are a huge number of warnings issued all the time. And so there are warnings, it's just not tracked and it's not something that a student can, can count on. They can say, why did I get a ticket and my neighbor didn't? My neighbor got a warning and I didn't.
And sort of to the officer?
Part of what this would do would bring some predictability to that and I think a sense from people that would be in violation that they're all being treated in the same way. And so that's, I think that could be one of the benefits of having that in place.
It sounds really good of the law, but you cannot promise that. There is no promise that they're treated equally.
Of course not, but is-
I mean, I think that, and if you, if you're mouth and you are record and a scum, you and a galler, they have a different experience than someone, oh, I'm so sorry, you let me do it down.
Well, that's absolutely true. But I think having, I still think having a more predictable, maybe we're in a sober state, and looking at the law or hearing about it from friends that that counts for something for them.
What about the amount of the fine? Do we want to keep it, have it at seventy-five? Do we want to increase it?
I agree with you. I mean, I agree that seventy-five dollars for a house of five is minimal. I look at how much it costs to enforce, especially if we do a public, you know, tracking of all the signatures. Because that's, that will take, if they're not all there, if all the roommates aren't there, how do you come down? Are they responsible of signing it? And if they're not around or they don't hear about it? I mean, it sounds like it's, it could be a lot of administrative-
Roommates change a recorder.
Right. It could be administrative, it could be administrative under. And, you know, having a minimal fine like that just seems that it's, you know.
And we don't even know who's in the house because they don't have to put the names on the landmark tenant form. So, I mean, it's like, it's a nightmare. I would like to suggest that we try decriminalizing and changing the fine and then if there's still a problem, we can come back to it. Because I don't see there's great support for the, and the, everybody signs, but if it's not a criminal penalty. And let's go right back and say one thing, and when I found out there's only one expungement that's allowed, that's when I decided decriminalization is what it is. I mean, I don't want them leaving, I mean, what if they have a public urination and some other stuff too? I mean, shoes, we're trying to get rid of.
Member Nysley?
Which one's more PC?
I mean-
Who up here has not been guilty? Maybe not you, but-
Did I show you on YouTube? Did I?
I hope not. But, no, I mean, we're pontificating on things every one of us up here have been guilty of.
And that's why, and that's why I want to say that Chief Pyle and his officers are the ones suggesting this decriminalization and the fines. Maybe we want to add twenty-five bucks to the fine. But I say, these are the people who are out there enforcing it, dealing with these issues, and they're the ones who say, we can make it work.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
And, you know, and of course I support staying with the fine. I think the original compromise was, I was here when we had our first discussion, we wanted nine o'clock as a, and ten o'clock was a compromise. So, you know, there's been compromise in this situation all along.
Okay. We will bring forth an ordinance.
How much money for the fine?
How about a hundred dollars for the fine? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's all right. I was just going to say, I would too, would support decriminalization of this.
Good.
But I do think the increased fines would, would probably help.
And we can revisit it later, so. You can revisit it later.
You can, you can.
No, I definitely support a higher fine, a larger fine. You know, a hundred dollars is nothing on a certain level. I mean, it's, it's less than a new cell phone, it's less than a pair of Michael Jordan tennis shoes. A hundred dollars is, on one level, is nothing. Again, if we were having this conversation in Westerville or Upper Arlington or Beechwood outside of Cleveland, Indian Hill, or any other neighborhoods where many of the students come from, this behavior would not be acceptable in those communities. It would be, so why are we accepting this behavior here?
They filter kids too.
That's right.
To educate them.
Why don't we move on to a police cruiser for the, a new police cruiser for the police department? The police department has in their budget thirty-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of a new police cruiser. I don't believe they've had a new, I don't think a cruiser has been replaced since 2008. And so the money, they have the money, it's been-
It's inappropriate. It's in the appropriations, not authorized to expand and exceeds my authority.
So we need authorization to expand.
So, right. We need authorization to expand those funds. This would be used to replace, this new cruiser would replace, I believe it's a 2004 Ford Expedition that has approximately ninety-two thousand miles on it. You know, we haven't done much regarding vehicle replacement in the last few years. We've been, things have been a little tight. However, if we don't do something, then we could end up having to buy a lot of them at one time. So they're just asking for one now and they have the funds to do that. So I'd like to go forward with that. Oh, also, once Chief Pyle has permission to expand those funds, he will do research and present some options to the Green Fleets Committee. So, but right now we just need to authorize-
Probably not another expedition, I take it.
I'm sorry?
Probably not another expedition.
Probably not. I would, I would guess not another expedition, but he did say that's been a really good vehicle for the police department. So we will go forward. Did you have something to say in here?
Well, essentially, at the staff meeting and subsequent discussions today, again, the Crown Vicks are going to be phased out, which is what we usually buy as marked cars. The Expedition, of course, is a four-wheel vehicle or all-wheel drive, which he'd like to replace. The discussion got at the staff meeting whether to go with Explorer, which is the next size down. A lot of these things, and then a hybrid you discussed as well, but a lot of the state contracts do not have hybrids in their mix. Finding something that would fit what we want is going to be one of the questions there. We might have to take it out to bid. We would probably not exceed the money that we're talking about, but taking out a bid with state contract means we start looking around saying, okay, what fits the bill? Again, the chief expressed the desire to have at least a few of these all-wheel-drive, four-wheel-drive vehicles available as cruisers or marked cars because the weather can be what it is. So this is what kicking back and forth. And as you say, we'll, we'll be investigating. He said these, he did some search on hybrids and other systems, but there's not a lot of track record on these and how they stand up. And really what you're talking about is the idling time and the suspension brakes and transmission systems that they're, they don't make them designed specifically for police, most of the time.
Thank you. So we will go forward with that purchase. The last thing on the Safety Committee agenda is twenty-five thousand dollars for Halloween. The services, the safety director has indicated that twenty-five thousand dollars is needed and that's to cover things like outside officers, overtime, extra trash hauling, food. Have I left anything out?
Streets, cleaning the streets.
Cleaning the streets.
Lighting the streets. We want to do the same light plants and all that we had in place for the multi-house parties on certain streets in the spring.
Lights were very effective for the multi-house families' parties, festivals, okay? It actually added to the safety because we had the lights up pretty much from desk to hotel.
Okay.
The city would actively, I don't know if we're actively seeking, but we actively would welcome any donations to our efforts in order to feed our emergency service personnel that have to work all day and all night.
And it would be acceptable to provide homemade cookies and things?
That'd be great.
Yes. So we'll go ahead with that then unless someone objects? I don't have any miscellaneous, do you?
I have just one. I'd like to bring up the gas line replacement pipelines that are occurring. There's going to be meeting six to seven, June 22nd at the community center. In particular, this is, they're going to be replacing large spots, I think seventeen thousand feet of gas line on the near east side. This is Columbia Gas with NiSource, I think it is. And again, it will impact a lot of the streets. I was told today they're going to do underground boring. I find that interesting that they can actually do that in front of ladders one way, but this will be a summer long activity. There should be a link on the website for that.
Well, I checked the website. They have a really informative PDF that talks all about the different things, but they don't have specific times for the public meeting. So if you could put that right on the front where we don't even have to-
Okay. I'll get that, I'll get that to Scott and we'll get that done. Essentially, six to seven, June 22nd at the community center, I think, room B.
But if that could be just on that.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all we have.
All right. The Safety Committee is adjourned then.
On to Planning and Development Committee Chair Chris Fall.
Thank you. I have one item to add and that is a recommendation from the Planning Commission for a public, for a planned unit development on down, on lower the East Union Street, East Union Street What's being tentatively called, this is down on Mill Iron, down that area by the university. This is, this has been put in as a PUD, though it is less than the two acres. And it could have gone through as a Title Forty-One, which council would have never even seen it, it would have gone through the planner's office. I, and I support the PUD designation of this, even though it's less than two acres, because I think that as we get more and more infilling, more and more redevelopment, this allows for the city and developers to have more flexibility on design and the design standards and all the other things that is just that much more difficult when you're doing an infill or redevelopment. And so I think that that's something that we should get used to and kind of, you know, welcome because I think that it makes actually for better infill development. And as a city, we've encouraged infill development because it makes more sense when it comes to infrastructure and kind of the environmental impacts. So Tony Ferian is here tonight to discuss it and if you could come up and we can start peppering you with-
Okay. Can I, if you-
Yeah, and, well, I think that, I would like Tony to describe a little bit. We do have a map and we will have to have a public hearing.
What was going on there?
A public hearing on this. And so I would like to initiate the initial council questions of Mr. Ferian.
Yeah, Tony Ferian, 8800 Lavell Road, owner-operator of Castle Brook Development Management Company. And as Chris said, we're proposing kind of smaller development down on East Union Street and Mill Iron. And what our proposal is to do is we've got essentially seven lots down there and there's four, I would say, very older homes. How's that? I don't want to misguide anybody there. And we're going to take these, these homes down. We've been working pretty closely the last, I would say, five to six months with John Paskey, the city co-director, and Paul Lowes, the city planner, I think you can, on trying to get this, you know, to where everybody gets kind of happy with what we're trying to accomplish. Also met with Andy Stone, the engineer, and had several meetings with him on infrastructure. We did come to one solution on, there's going to be a little bit of private, public-type situation, those where I've agreed to do some curb work down there because there is no curbs and sidewalks on either street. And I believe that's a huge safety issue. So there's a little compromise in there and we've talked about redoing some streets down there on East Union the first year and then possibly the next year. So we're trying to make this area better, basically. Trying to, looking at some of the model of the comprehensive plan as to whether this is a high-density area. I'm sure you guys are aware of this area. And basically, I think what we're trying to do is, is make that area better for the community, better for the students and walking distance to all campus area, although we are required on the one-to-one parking. Encouraging people to walk in these areas is a big thing for us and I think that area definitely keeps people off the streets. They're going to be nice, they're going to be new. We have a management company that takes care of our properties. I'm an on-site owner, so I think Paul saw me down there, what, seven-thirty, o'clock in the morning, Palmer Fest, cleaning the parking lots.
As well, I clean the parking lot.
And that's something we try to do all the time. We have a big management team behind it and we try to take care of our properties. I welcome any questions or anything, any suggestions from you guys that, you know, might help me make it better. I know we've met with the Planning Commission and we've talked about some different things and I think we went three or four rounds there and got some great suggestions on lighting and some other little things. And there were some conditions that were, that were put in place by the Planning Commission, which we've, which we agreed on. I thought everything looked pretty small. As you would say, we all kind of got in the same, same box. So, yeah.
On a, on a somewhat semi-related, I don't know if you've had any conversations with Habitat for Humanity, but as you're taking down the older buildings, I don't know what kind of condition they're in, but there is a movement in Habitat for Humanity to create these restores where they're giving second life to windows, doors, things obviously that don't have lead paint on them. So again, maybe if you're, if you're so inclined, it wouldn't be required, obviously, but if you are curious, it might be a way to reuse some of the older material.
Actually, that's a great suggestion and we did, actually, I think you and I have talked about that a little bit in a conversation. And the place that's open now up in the plains, they haven't actually officially opened and they've been kind of, I've been kind of busy and I'll drive by and hope to catch somebody there and there's never anybody there, so I'm not quite sure if they're up and running. And I would be more, you know, that would be less things in the landfills and obviously if somebody else could use some of these materials, I would absolutely encourage that. Thanks for reminding me that, Ken.
You're welcome.
Because I do need to get back to them.
Does the Planning Commission members have?
What was your timeframe, Tony? Is it-
The timeframe, if approved, would be, we've actually- The timeframe, if approved, would be, we've actually got our demolition permit, so we're, regardless of what the outcome of this is, is I'm taking these houses down because they're Isors. And, you know, to get the land prepped up and a nice site there, I was going to try to start that within the next three to four weeks, to be honest with you.
You were looking at what leasing term?
Leasing term, I would, which would probably be June of 2012.
I was just trying to give councilmen that idea further.
Thank you.
Paul, why are we doing the street before he builds?
Um, actually, I can answer that. Actually, I was talking, I'm, I'm sorry. I was talking to Andy Stone about this. We've been emailing, and we're going to coordinate this together.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean...
I don't know, Paul, is that email or not? Sorry.
Who's paying for the water line upgrade? You're paying totally?
Yes.
Out to even the...
There is an existing water line.
It's two inches, yeah?
Yeah, two inches.
That's what it says. It's not the two-inch water line, isn't it?
They have a copy of it.
The two-inch line is from your line into my building. Yeah, that's my cost.
Okay, how about the eight-inch sewer line?
That's already existing on the, on the, on the street.
I was reading the back page or something. I was wondering, is there any cost to the city utilities? Oh, it's from, eight-inch line is recommended for building two.
Right.
You have to correctly size the lines.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. But one, I have one last small question. What about the railroad right-of-way? Are you butting up against it?
That railroad right-of-way is a little bit off of where our property is.
It's not, um...
No, I think it's further down into Sol and Bloom's areas.
Right.
Well, I mean, the railroad right-of-way is where the university was going to put that new road, so it's, it's all along the B and O tracks there.
But I don't think his plot goes all the way to that.
It does, that's what I was asking. I mean, I haven't seen the map, so I don't...
Okay. You, you did get a copy of it, right? Should be in your office?
There's no location on it.
Right. It's a nice drawing, but there's no...
You know what I'm saying? Where...
No location on it.
Railroad East Union Street.
I know East Union Street.
Yeah, I mean, we just couldn't identify, I mean, it was two minutes, so.
That's why we'd like to talk about it again, probably.
So this is an initial committee meeting on it, and we will have to have a public hearing, which I have the requirements from the code to be all. Jim?
Because I understood the request, you're asking for variance from the PUD requirements of two acres.
That's correct.
Yes, how, how much land is you, are you covering?
We are one point zero five. Yeah, a little over an acre.
Okay. Actually, they had to go to a variance for zoning.
That was on an original plan for fill, and then the plans kind of got switched several times, actually. Multiple times, I should might add. And so we didn't need that, that requirement anymore because we're not bringing, we don't have to bring in the fill that we originally thought we would have to bring in for the first...
The Title 41.
The Title 41, that's correct.
If you can go the PUD...
Now that was the flood...
Actually, we will need the fill now.
Right.
Period.
And that's part of the issue.
Right.
Title 41, so.
So again, this is brought by the Planning Commission, just general stuff. I think you got the one pager or two pages there from the data. We're talking about 84 beds, approximately 91 spaces in terms of parking. You saw the checkup list in terms of trees and other issues. Again, the only variance is the size, which is two acre for PUD. That's been done in the past. If you remember, Coulson was one of the first ones many years ago, which I was probably up here ranting about. Yeah, I, I, yes, yes. But also, whereas we've also been looking at, I think Madison Place, at one time Herald Avenue or Herald Square was in that mix until they decided to go to subdivision route. Maybe the Kevin Kline one on Hickory. So we have cases where the development, planning development falls into this range. Again, the amount of two-acre plus areas are kind of limited what we have in the city. And if we are talking about infill, this is where it comes into play.
In future times, you'd have to give a variance for lock coverage to...
Actually, originally, some of the plans, early plans were an adjustment to try getting that 75 percent, 60 percent coverage, but it kept falling out of the mix each time. And again, it has two road frontages, and it's, it's a good location for a student housing.
So in order to try to get the coverage down, was that the stacked parking? I know we discussed that at one point.
Yes. Stacked parking was one issue, and the second issue was we were, I think, like eight or nine sure of being able to get it.
Of meeting...
To meet it, and I guess I would say that I was scared to come here and ask for that because I was afraid to get turned down. Although very willing to do it at that point, I was just...
Fear. Well, I think examining those creative solutions, I think, is important and good to hear, at least, whether or not it works for this project or that project, just to voice that and to have it out there as an idea is good.
Yeah. I thought it actually looked pretty good. I, I thought we came up with a pretty good design, and at the last minute, I kind of got cold feet on the whole situation. Because I only get one shot at this, and after that, I didn't have another shot. So I had to go with what the law was and what was created already existing and follow the laws that were already in place.
Now, the Public Commission, Fighting Commission had a public hearing on this?
We did. We did indeed.
And, and the city council also has to have a public hearing. And, and that's within, we have to have 15-day notice for that.
So you can get one in soon? Do you want, do you have a date to set now or not?
Um, yeah, you have the calendar. If you don't have a calendar, Debbie will look at the calendar and set that. It can't be two weeks, because that's four weeks. So it will have to be the third Monday come out. Has to be in the summer, doesn't it?
I don't know, it sounds good.
Oh, no, it just has to be in the summer.
Are there more than 10 persons within the 500 feet?
Probably so.
Well, it says property owners, which is different.
I think we submitted that with PUD, property owners.
Right. And there are more than 10?
Um, I think there were, yeah.
I think so.
So you need to, you need to notify them of the public...
No, we need...
No.
The property, as opposed to just putting in the newspaper, we have to...
Oh, okay.
Is there other questions? I think, you know, this is a process, this seems cumbersome sometimes, but I think that when looking at, you know, infilling and increasing in density, this is the sort of process that works for everybody, the citizens and the neighbors and the property developers and the city, because it's more collaborative than just going in and doing a Title 41. So I'm, I would encourage other people to see this process, kind of looking at this as a cooperative or something like that. So, is there any other questions?
I bet you'd like to thank us for putting your items so far down on the agenda.
I thought maybe if I wore a tie, I'd be first.
Probably.
I'm going to start.
I don't have any miscellaneous. Does somebody else have this?
No, no, I just have one.
The statement is that, and I know that we may be, still be waiting on some responses, that we do have to bring forth the AEP franchise agreement because that does expire in a month. So that will be coming.
Thank you.
What? Probably. We might get three readings in July. Can't remember, do you remember the date in August, Debbie? Was it near the end? Either way, we'll, we'll be bringing one forward.
Paula, is that, I'm sorry, does that include input from the tree commission?
We've, we have had that.
Okay, great.
Additional questions raised by council members, so we're waiting on some responses, and then we'll be bringing it forward. But we have to get something in place.
Thank you.
We're moving on to the finance and personnel.
Realize part of the chip grant that we put forward through HACCAP was the building of a Habitat for Humanity house. We discussed, of course, the three lots that exist on Alexandria Street. The discussion, of course, would be, you know, giving them, locating one of the three. And then the question, of course, is which three are the three or two, something like that. And that's discussion, I think, that we probably have internally, but eventually you should be in on it and just so you know what we're talking about. And again, we have yet to get the grant, but anticipation would be to look forward and say, which, how would that work?
Probably the most buildable one. We'll let you know.
I give it to you. That's a good question. Well, you know, that's it, there's...
Pass the coin.
Is there something you're going to do with the other lot?
No.
So you pick up the one most buildable?
I think so. Maybe the one, okay, I look at this way, the one, uphill one is a retaining wall that we owned. Probably someday we'll probably have to repair, so you don't want to build against that. On the other hand, the one down, down, if you're thinking in terms of shade, you'd shade all those trees, the fruit trees that were put in on the upper lot, or the middle one. And I don't know if it even, the next question, of course, are those lots actually conforming? That we should actually put two of them together? So if anything, I'd lean towards the bottom two and leave the other one open. So in case we have to repair that retaining wall, if you look at it, it's kind of rusty. It may be stable. All I know is it'll stay in places rest, but knowing the hillside's in a downtown, probably not. So this is the, it's just so prepared you that when, when the grant comes through, we'll have to start moving that across. That's all. Again, the idea is...
Now moving on to planning personnel.
Actually, actually, finance and personnel, it's a miscellaneous. I do not, I don't have any miscellaneous. I think it was covered by, by Ms. Kuhn and, and issues that remain dealt with.
Yeah, I think we got it all in the other miscellaneous.
My miscellaneous just went away.
Having addressed all of that, it's on our agenda, we are adjourned.